Scott, are you ready?
One second.
I'm ready whenever you are.
Did you find it?
And we're on, too.
Sorry?
We're on.
Yeah. I hereby call the 2,267th Meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The parts for the light are supposed to be installed next week, just so you know. All right, so first up, we have the Milwaukee High School Outstanding Student Achievement Award for April of 2018 to Aleve Ursen, presented by Principal Pender.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, fellow council members. And Aleve Ursen has been an outstanding student, and that's why she's up here today for the month of April. I first met Aleve when she was a freshman and got to know her a little bit better her sophomore year as when she was in student council. She was also a member of the Student Fund Board, the board that oversees the expenditures of the funds that students collect. It means that we have to have students on there approving that the principal doesn't just spend them on his own vacation plan. But she was, I got to know her that year very well and also through the activities she's been in. She's been a stalwart on our women's basketball team and has done quite a bit of other things. As you see, a fairly high GPA, what is it, 3.92?
Yeah.
3.92. AP classes, heavily into the math and sciences, and just been an outstanding student. I'll let Aleve talk about what her future plans are.
So I am planning to attend Seattle University or Oregon State University, currently leaning towards Seattle University, and I am planning to study civil engineering because I'm really interested in natural disasters, so I kind of want to focus on building buildings that can withstand them and also buildings or like buildings that can be quickly rebuilt in areas that don't already have buildings that can withstand natural disasters, so...
We might have a job for you.
Well, who wants to start?
I think I went first last time.
All right.
Okay. So first, I always like to start by thanking the adults who I can see behind you, who are so supportive of you and I'm sure have been a huge influence in your whole student career so far, so congratulations to them and to you.
Thank you.
On a personal note, I've sort of been whispering, my daughter's now seven, I've been whispering engineering into her ears since before she was supposed to be out of the womb, but she just recently told me that she's going to be a veterinarian. So it's, I just think it's, I just love seeing all of this interest in, especially in just sort of the 3D space and the sciences, and I just commend you on doing that and pursuing that in college. I think that's really, you know, obviously there's, like Lisa said, there's high demand, so congratulations and good luck on your future.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's great to see women going into the sciences. I was one of those who was kind of intimidated by that, and I'm glad to see you're not, so good for you. And I wondered about basketball. Do you think you'll still play basketball at the college level?
I've decided not to. I just feel like with studying engineering, I feel like that's just such a hard major and I'll probably be too stressed with school to commit to basketball because that's kind of like a full-time job, really. So I definitely did think about it, but I decided not to.
I can see that, okay. Can you tell us a little bit about what Equity Team is?
Yeah, so Equity Team is a team I joined this year with administrators, staff, and also students, and Mr. Pender is also on that team. And so we all meet once a month and we work together to discuss like the inequities in our schools, so racism, homophobia, Islamophobia, sexism, things like that. And so through that team, we also made four school-wide lessons in which we were able to discuss like what is racism, like white privilege, and like, I think how it is like witnessed in our school and like how to like combat it and like not be a bystander. And so I think it was like a really great opportunity this year, and I felt like we were really making a difference and yeah.
Great. Sounds like a great program.
Well, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
There's like so much that you've done. I'm always amazed, but when I look through this, I mean, we've got two pages here of activity, starting back in the ninth grade or eighth grade or something like that, right? That's probably just when you started recording them before.
Yeah.
You were still doing it, probably a young entrepreneur, all that, all that good stuff. So the ACE mentorship, you know a little bit about that, and it says, I think, that you helped build a building through that, so what were you, what were you all doing with that?
Yeah, so ACE is a mentorship for students, and so it's about, this year it's about 150 students from all over, mostly like through David Douglas and Grant and Barlow, and I think I'm the only Milwaukee student, so I'm kind of working on spreading the word and like getting the science teacher, math like teachers to start telling their students about it because I really love it. And so what it is, it's a group of students, and then so there's these mentors, and so it's professionals in the engineering, construction, and architecture areas, and so they, we meet about once every two weeks, and so our goal is to, it changes every year, but this year it's a goal to build a building that is also like a pop-up, so it's like some aspect of it needs to be like changing constantly. And so every two weeks we meet, and so there's like a group of students, about 15 students, and there's also about 15 mentors, which are like the professionals in the architecture, construction, and engineering fields. And so in those meetings, we get to work on that project of building the building with the pop-up aspect to it, but it's not a real building, unfortunately. I wish it was, yeah, but it's really cool because we get to not only like just put our creative and like wild ideas into it, but we also get to see like the real aspect of like what actually goes into it with like the fields with architecture, construction, and engineering, so it's really cool. And they also give great advice like with school and career choices.
Well, didn't I also see Habitat for Humanity, so did you get to build something real then?
Yeah, I did, yes. Yeah, that was great. Yeah, I got to paint a house for six hours, so that was actually really fun.
Oh.
Yeah, and yeah, I'm the Vice President of Habitat for Humanity, and I've done that for two years, and I really, really like it. It really feels like you're making a difference through that.
It's amazing. Thank you for all you do. Yeah, you help enhance the community.
I think you're like the third in a row that's been Habitat for Humanity member, which is fantastic.
Yeah, that's really great.
I think that would be so gratifying, something I keep thinking about and need to find the time to do it because it's an important thing. What is Community 101?
Yeah, so Community 101 is another club at Milwaukee, so Milwaukee gets, I think, a grant of $5,000, and so the students actually get to decide where that money gets to go. So yeah, it's kind of feels like got a lot of power, $5,000. But so what we do, we first we research a list of nonprofits that benefit Milwaukee, so like so that we can get back to our community. And so we research the nonprofits, and then afterwards we go to site visits, so we get to visit the nonprofits and to see if it's a functioning business and then see if it's something that we could really benefit with the money. And so then afterwards, we grow back together and we discuss which ones we think would be most beneficial and yeah, so...
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for giving back to your community. That's wonderful that you do that, and you have an incredible resume, as they've all mentioned, some wonderful athletics and academics, so congratulations and good luck wherever you end up.
Thank you.
I'm very curious to see what you come out with, I mean, the whole 3D printing thing, 3D printing buildings and all the things they're talking about that. You could probably play some intermuraball just to blow off the steam.
Yeah, that's what I've been thinking.
A good idea to have that.
Yeah.
I went to a thing this last weekend on participatory budgeting, and one of the cities that did it really interestingly was Seattle, and the first year they did it with, I want to say $750,000, and they let people between ages of 11 and I think it was 21 decide how that money was going to be spent.
Yeah.
So when you were talking about that, no, it's...
Community 101.
Community, that one. It reminded me of that. Would you, what would you think about a process like that if that was local, where there was a piece of the budget, city budget, that said, all right, the young people in Milwaukee, how should we spend this?
I think that would be amazing, and I think a lot of students at Milwaukee and like community members within Milwaukee would really think that would be really amazing because like I know, being a part of Community 101, I feel like I'm really giving back to my community, and then also I feel, because I think it was about two weeks ago, I went to go visit a homeless shelter and then also a service that houses at-risk teens of like self-harm, and I thought it was just really great to just see those like nonprofits, and then once we like get back together and like decide where it goes to, it's just a really great feeling to feel like really giving back to the community and then it can benefit yourself or your fellow classmates, I think it's just really amazing.
Well, that was what blew me away, when they said, you know, they started talking about this, and they put up the list of the things that the kids had chosen, and I was expecting, you know, a skate park in there and, you know, stuff that kids would say, yeah, I want that. It was all, it was all stuff like that, it was all homeless shelters, food banks, and it was really pretty amazing. So the other question that came up in the same, same thing that I'm sort of curious about, what would you think if the city, plug your ears in, what would you think if the city changed the charter to allow 16-year-olds to vote in city elections?
Oh, I think that's great.
Oh, I think that'd be really cool. I feel like since 16-year-olds, they can drive, they are already in high school, so I feel like at that point they're already pretty mature and like they're already making pretty, once you're in high school, you're already making pretty powerful like personals decisions, so I think at 16, I feel like you're already responsible enough to make voting decisions pretty well, so I think that'd be really cool. And also it would probably bring 16-year-olds like more into the community and things like that.
And engage them more and probably make them lifelong voters.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and then also like you can start educating them in school and start telling them about the voting process, and then they can start doing that later on, so I feel like that'd be...
Those would probably be the most educated voters that we...
True.
Well, I hope that you'll see, think at least about continuing to pursue your work as a, in student government.
Yeah.
Because you're obviously very thoughtful in that realm, and it's worth doing.
Thanks, yeah. Thank you so much.
The city of Milwaukee is proud to recognize for outstanding student achievement in academics, civic engagement, and extracurricular activities at Milwaukee High School. Aleve Ursen, let it be known to all that on the 17th day of April 2018, the City Council of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the County of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, recognized this student as an excellent example of the bright future of this community and nation.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks. All right, next up, we have Building Safety Month proclamation, and this will be presented by our building official, Sam Vandegrift.
Hello, nice to see you all.
Hi.
So I'm Samantha Vandegrift, as I was just introduced, I'm the building official here in Milwaukee. I'm here tonight for Building Safety Month, and some little bit of background on it. The building field and all its related codes are all about safety. We review and inspect construction in its many phases to help ensure the end product is safe for people who live, work, and play. While we support and promote safety of the structure for the end user every day, we want to take the time to recognize that construction field itself can be inherently dangerous if precautions aren't taken. Building Safety Month is our way of showing our respect, concern, and appreciation for those who actually do the work in the construction field. So with that, the proclamation you have before you is to declare May 2018 Building Safety Month in recognition of those construction workers.
Thank you. We'll be happy to read it, or you can read it?
They told me you were going to read it.
Thanks for throwing me under the bus.
Default.
All right, whereas construction is vital to our strong local economy, yet remains one of the most dangerous professions, and whereas confidence is achieved through the devotion of building safety and fire prevention officials, operations personnel, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure safe construction, and whereas Building Safety Month encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safety and resilient construction. Building Safety Month 2018 encourages everyone to take steps to ensure that the places we live, learn, work, travel, worship, and play are safe and sustainable. And whereas a diversity of stakeholders will enrich the dialogue and accelerate the adoption of the best safety practices, and whereas the Milwaukee Building Department encourages all members of the building community to share and learn in safety from one another, and whereas every day should include a focus on safety, a coordinated annual event across the region serves to heighten awareness. Now therefore, I, Mark Gamba, Mayor of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the County of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim May 2018 to be Building Safety Month.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the Arbor Day proclamation, and this will be brought to us by our Public Works Director, Peter Pastrelly.
Good evening. I am Peter Pastorelli. I'm the Public Works Director, and I'm here to talk to you a little bit about our Arbor Day proclamation and our Arbor Day celebration on April 21st. Over the last couple of years, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, I think 2016, 2017, we've, we've had an Arbor Day proclamation, declared Arbor Day on a certain day in, in April, and we've celebrated that day, doing various activities, planting trees and, and things like that. This year's, I think, particularly exciting to the tree board and staff and to the community. It's our second year that Milwaukee's been awarded the Tree City USA Award, which is a distinguished award that recognizes the hard work that the community puts towards our urban forest and the resources that we put towards to make sure that we're providing a benefit to the community. In the past, we've celebrated Arbor Day by ceremonially, ceremonially planting a tree as a way of teaching our citizens about the benefits of those trees. You know, those benefits include, they help reduce and mitigate the impacts of climate change, they reduce stormwater runoff and soil erosion, it provides a habitat for wildlife in our urban area, it improves our local and regional air quality, helps reduce noise pollution, and it increases our property values as well. Our Arbor Day celebration is scheduled from noon to 1:30 on April 21st at Ball Michelle Park, and the festivities are going to include remarks from our mayor, who also read the proclamation at the, at the event as well, remarks by a special guest, ceremonial tree planting. We've also scheduled a tree giveaway, and there's some kids' activities and refreshments as well, and it's tied in also with our event, so.
Yeah, and we've, you know, in the, in the past year, we've ceded a tree board. We're working on significant tree code, and I signed a goal. I don't remember how official this was, but I signed a goal to plant 22,000 trees in the City of Milwaukee by 2025, I think was the, the goal. So it's.
You better get out there and start.
Trees are a critical part of what we have going on right now, and, and as we learned, what was it, last year, two years ago, there's a great deal of value to trees that people don't really think about beyond the things that Peter just talked about. There's even been serious, significant, multiple study data that shows healthy births, a higher rate of healthy births in an area that is well-treated, a neighborhood that is well-treated as opposed to a neighborhood that is not well-treated. It's that significant. And so I think this is an important day and a proclamation, and I hope a lot of you will come out to the celebration on Saturday because we do have a special guest coming, in theory. In any case, I will read the proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beauty of our community, and whereas trees play an integral part in sequestering carbon and are therefore critical to a climate solution, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Mark Gamba, Mayor of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the County of Clackamas in the State of Oregon, to hereby proclaim April 21st, 2018 as Arbor Day in Milwaukee, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to mitigate climate change and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
So tonight's consent agenda includes the minutes of the March 6, 2018 regular session, March 20, 2018 work session, and March 20, 2018 regular session. A resolution appointing Britt McCon to the Kellogg Good Neighbor Committee, a resolution accepting the Public Safety Advisory Committee bylaws, a resolution adopting council goals for 2018. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I would like to remove item D, the resolution regarding council goals.
I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items A, B, and C, but.
Setting aside D.
Setting aside D.
All right. It has been moved and seconded to approve items A, B, and C of tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No inherit, it passes unanimously. Let's go ahead and go to D and just get that done.
The reason I wanted to pull it is not because I want to change any language or that I'm against it. I wanted to highlight it because I thought it was important that we don't just put our goals, these are, these are our goals, these are the city's three goals, and I just wanted to call them out and put it on record and publicize a little bit more. So our goals are housing affordability, climate change reduction, and finishing Milwaukee Bay Park. And as far as the first one, the housing affordability, I think that staff has done an amazing job in the past year, and I wanted just to call them out, especially I think Alma has done a fantastic job. We've adopted housing incentives, we're working on a housing affordability strategic plan, we've worked very closely with other partners to try and get more housing into the city, and I just think it's been amazing. With respect to Milwaukee Bay Park, we've had some really constructive, good conversations with North Clackamas Parks District regarding funding to finish that, and we've seen some really good designs, and I'm excited about where that's going as well. I won't speak much to the climate, I'll save that one for the mayor since I know it's dear to your heart, but I think that we also have a really good climate action reduction goal and, and that we, that the climate action plan that we're working on, I think is going to be a really, really good guide for the city.
Climate is a subject that can get all kinds of people very excited really fast. And the science tells us, the experience of our weather patterns tell us that the climate is changing. And the way that plays out is bad for everybody if we don't do anything about it. And while we are a small town, I think it's incumbent on everyone everywhere to be doing everything they can. So when we set this goal, we started out with just saying that we would create a climate action plan. We're doing that. We're about halfway through it. It's, I think it's going to be a solid plan, and it will give us a direction for our work as we move forward. Part of what will come of us doing the work we will do is that not only will we mitigate our portion, but we will set an example for other small cities, other small, not wealthy cities, just like us, that it can be done, and it can be done to the benefit of the, of the city on all levels. So this is, to me, in the long term, this is the most important goal that we're working on. In the short term, the housing is probably the most important goal. But I think it's critical that we start this as soon as possible, and I'm very proud of this council and our staff, so.
You're going to make the motion?
I will move that, I will move that we adopt the resolution establishing the city council's goals.
I'll second.
It has been moved to adopt the resolution establishing the city council goals for 2018, and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No hurt? So next up, we have audience participation. This is a part of the agenda during which council will hear citizen statements regarding city business. Those wishing to speak must fill out the green speaker card available on the table in the hall and identify item number four, audience participation, as council has other business items on the agenda this evening. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Because the information provided during the public comment may be new to some counselors, the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require follow-up. Before we begin, are there any follow-up reports from the April 3, 2018? Audience participation is over.
I actually want to take this moment to note that we will be meeting in a joint board meeting with the school board because it is about affordable housing, and that has been at several of the meetings lately. So that is going to be taking place on June 14 at 5:30 PM. It's going to be located at the North Clackamas School District Headquarters, their administrative building. So we'll be noticing that as we do for any of your meetings, but just for individuals who have been watching this conversation in particular, it'll be a good dialogue around our houseless and homeless students. Thank you.
All right. First up, I have Charles Mays. Please state your name and.
My name is Charles Mays, and I'm with Cambie Asparagus Farm located here on Scott and Maine. Anyway, I just wanted to say to the board and to the staff and the audience out here is there's a new sign on Ochigo, and I took it upon myself to rent a couple of spaces there for the next two months, and I will continue renting that starting in October through January. And I just wanted to stop by to share with you folks some pictures of what's going on in color out there on the highway on McLaughlin. And I rented five or six spots that, that's, that is mentioning Maine and Scott, where the restaurant's located, so I thought it'd be fun to bring these five photos over here to show you what I did on McLaughlin Boulevard to share with the city. So I'm going to leave these here. As I speak, I love this city, and as you well know, I have a boat, excuse me, I have a boot out here in the front of my store. That boot came from the country shop out here on McLaughlin Boulevard, and I purchased that boot. So someday I have plans on donating that boot to the city of Milwaukee because that has been an icon for the city for the past 40 years. And now that I'm 71 years old, I've lived here in this city for 50-some years or 60-some years. So anyway, that's what I'm going to give the city when I get tired of my boot because I think.
So you're going to give us the boot?
I'm going to give you the boot.
Been wanting to give us the boot for a while.
I couldn't resist that.
But I would like to be able to leave these someplace so everybody can see these five wonderful signs that I had made specially for that new icon, not icon, excuse me, that new sign up there on McLaughlin there by Ochigo. It cost me lots of money, but when I'm helping the city to promote it and to have people come and visit us, I don't mind spending that money, okay?
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you very much. Oh, two more things that I want to say. I want to say once again that I really like that park, that parking enforcer. I think we need him full-time. That's number one. The second thing is, we are the city of Milwaukee, the city of Dogwoods. I would like to see the committee with the trees that they plant more Dogwoods. I think Dogwood City would look very nice with more Dogwoods, using the Bernard Building as an example. If we're going to have trees out there, I would think that that city, that block there with the trees that are going to be put in there should be Dogwoods trees, you know? I like to say it like this here, I come downtown to Milwaukee, where are the Dogwoods? You know, the city of Dogwoods, there's only about six or eight. But anyway, so that's what I want to say there. And then in regards to the park, I heard somebody say something about the park. I still say, across the street, it needs to be maintained. It looks pretty bad. Thank you once again for letting me take your time.
All right, thank you, Charles.
Have a nice night.
Thank you so much.
Can you?
Yeah, put them over.
Okay, next up, Charles Byrd.
Is that okay?
Oh, sure.
One of us is moral support. I'm not sure. Island Station MBA.
Charles Byrd, I live in Island Station, Milwaukee at 12312 Southeast River Road.
Milo Denham, Island Station, 12106 Southeast 19th Avenue. I really thought I could come and see you in a month or two, but I was down at the river yesterday, and the river's rising. And so the reason I'm here is to talk to you about trying to preserve the value of the land survey at Spring Park. There are a number of small wooden stakes that are about six to eight inches tall. Two of them are way down close to the river, and here, probably another couple of weeks, they will be underwater. And I would normally think that they would be okay, except that last winter, when the water came up, the stone walkway at the end of the dock, that's 80% in the park, all those stones were lifted up and moved around. So the water, even though it's rather calm right there, it still has a lot of movement. So my proposal is to, in addition to that, there were two wooden stakes and a metal pin with a red flag pointing to where the pin is, it's underneath that walkway, and the metal pin is now gone. So we're starting to lose some of our markers out there from the survey.
But they did put in a permanent, underneath, underneath the walkway.
They found the one underneath the walkway.
Oh, so it was.
It was my understanding.
Okay.
So that's, the walkway's still there, but they had three to mark where to point to it.
Right.
And the little pin with the little red flag, now that's gone. So we're starting to see some of the markers to point the way or point out to where a corner is. We're starting to see some of those disappear. So I'm hoping that you could direct the Public Works Department to go out and put in some steel posts at each of the white posts. The surveyor has put in the white posts to mark right next to or proximity of a pin or a corner, and my concern is that if we don't get out there and mark them with something more substantial, we may lose some of the markers. And if we lose the markers, we'll have to rehire a land survey to come back in and find those corners again.
Well, as long as the corners are in, it takes two seconds to find them with a metal detector.
But then you're going to have to verify that there's, that that's the right corner and not a pin that you found there.
You're right, Mayor, you're right. They're always there. I want to thank the city and the council for doing the survey at all because without, that was, I know the pins have always been there, even when the county was putting in the park improvements and they were unable to complete that part of the park for reasons that given that they were uncertain about the boundary. So I'm glad, I really want to thank the city for going ahead and establishing that boundary and encourage the city to continue with respecting the neighbor's property and to put in some, some additional development there to basically protect the privacy of the neighbor and the sanctitude of the park that's right next to it.
So the other point I wanted to make is, we hope you would hurry up and ask the NCPRT to plant the native hedge along the boundary. It'll do two things. It'll permanently mark where the line is, where we have nothing at this point, and it'll help to preserve the neighbor's private property rights by showing visitors to the park, this is the end of the park, here's a hedge, native hedge, beyond that is the neighbor's property.
Just sorry, that was a feature that was in the plan and that they didn't.
In the master plan.
Master plan that wasn't completed, so it's an encouragement to complete that.
And then the last point I wanted to make is that I've heard that some people think there might have been two surveys. If you look at page three and four of that handout I gave you, you'll see that it looks like the property line moves between those two, but it really, it doesn't. It's in the same place. What's happened is that the neighbor's extended his dock with a stone walkway, and when you use the aerial photograph, it looks like the line has moved, but it's actually the end of the dock has extended out into the park. So the property line's in the same place. There is no second survey or question about where the line is. The current survey found the line in the same place that the prior survey found it. So I just wanted to. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, thanks.
And thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
All right, that's all that I have for this period. All right. North Milwaukee Industrial Area Comprehensive Plan Zoning Code Amendments File Numbers CPA-2017-002 and ZA-2017-003, Continued from March 6th, 2018. Public hearing on the North Milwaukee Industrial Area Plan and Code Amendments File Numbers CPA-2017-002 and ZA-2017-003 is called to order. This evening's hearing is a continuation of the Council's consideration of the proposed amendments regarding the North Milwaukee Industrial Area from March 6th, 2018. We are here tonight to receive new information from staff, take public testimony and to deliberate and give direction regarding the proposed amendments. Does any member of Council wish to announce any actual or potential conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
No. Does any member of the audience have any objections to the Council's jurisdiction to consider this matter? Seeing none. Does any member of the audience have any objections to the Council's participation in this hearing? Seeing none. Staff will now provide an update on the proposed amendments and present the questions that will frame our deliberations. This will be presented by our Associate Planner Vera Sloss.
The cap's already on?
Caps back, Slim.
Anybody?
Supposed to be.
There you go.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. Vera Colley, Associate Planner, here to present the staff report for the NMIA Continued Hearing. Give me one second, I just need to find the presentation. Tonight's presentation has three parts. Just want to briefly go over the actual code amendments. It's been a bit since we've talked about them and I want to make sure that we're all on the same page as far as the actual code language that we're proposing for this revision. Want to go over the decision-making options on the Millport Mixed Use Overlay and sort of summarize what we heard from Council at the last hearing and then present the new information that came up from that, from that last hearing. So again, for the proposed code changes, the permitted uses in the revision in the code, in the code amendments generally reflect the existing zoning. Of course, we've reorganized the code and we're proposing to combine some of the zones and create that mixed use overlay and then the employment zone in the south, but generally the permitted use table that we're proposing generally does reflect the existing zoning. We are proposing that some office uses and some limited commercial uses would be permitted in the North Milwaukee Employment Zone, which are not currently permitted in the M-zone or the manufacturing zone. So we're proposing to do some limited upzoning of that current manufacturing zone to provide some more flexibility and some additional uses in that manufacturing zone. Many of the standards, as I said, in the uses mirror the existing code. We're proposing some clarifications to increase some flexibility, but also to establish some special standards for projects that are located on key streets and I'll be talking about that in a moment. We are proposing to establish an actual map of key streets where some specific design stairs would be triggered, also including some minimum setbacks, establish some different parking restrictions, some frontage occupancy requirements, and provide a height bonus, which I'll be talking about in a moment. But again, we're not making any radical changes to the list of permitted uses in the zones. We are proposing some design standards for projects that occur on key streets. Again, what is proposed to be the mixed use overlay up in the northeastern section currently does have design standards for new construction and major renovations. Also, Main Street within the sub-area four, what is currently sub-area four is also considered a key street for those design standards. We're proposing to include McBride and 17th to be key streets where some of these design standards would be triggered by either new construction or major renovations. Things like building orientation, ground floor and street-facing windows, establishing corners requiring some weather protection, things that sort of are urban design elements that really create a more pedestrian type of feel on just those key streets. Now onto building height. The existing code does not have a minimum building height. We are proposing a minimum building height of 25 feet to discourage or to prevent low single-story development, particularly for the developments where we are allowing for some limited retail or those kinds of commercial uses. We're trying to get away from kind of that single-story sort of plaza or strip mall sort of feeling and really trying to get some additional height for the buildings. The maximum height in the existing code is 45 feet. The code amendments that we've been talking about really wanted to look at some more vertical density and to increase that base maximum height to 65 feet and include a height bonus. So, what the revision talks about are additional kind of two stories or 24 feet in the MUTSA for residential or green building, similar to what we allow in the downtown for height bonuses, or in the North Milwaukee Employment Zone, which does not permit the residential, that you would get an additional 12 feet of height for a green building. We've been thinking about this a bit more and we were considering another option for how we might treat building height. One of the goals of the NMIA plan is an eco-district, or sort of this idea where we're really trying to promote green building, and I use that term loosely, green building kinds of practices. And one way we might think about that is to keep that base maximum height where it is right now, the 45 feet, and allow for bonus stories or bonus height up to a maximum height for buildings that use green building practices. And what that would do is rather than increase that base maximum height, we're actually keeping that threshold lower thereby requiring essentially any building that goes over 45 feet or three stories, over three stories, would need to be built with green building standards. So, it's kind of a balancing act in trying to, we want to make sure that we're providing incentives for folks to want to do the green building, but not disincent, obviously vertical development, but it seems to be something that, you know, we have a vertical development happening right here downtown and thinking that if someone is looking to do a multi-story office building or a mixed use building or something like that, that green building practices would be required to incentivize and allow for those bonus stories. So it's something to consider, how the Council might want to handle that, but we thought that that was an alternative to how the code was being presented to you, sort of in that proposal up until now, but thinking that maybe what we really want to do is stress the green building requirement and that's a way to get there.
But in this package, we're not yet revisiting what the green building, what qualifies. That's a discussion we're still going to have down the line in terms of what green building standards meet.
Well, the way the green, well, right. So the green building standards that we have in the current code right now, or the proposed code right now, mirror the green building standards as are written for downtown and in central Milwaukee. That doesn't mean we can't revisit them right now for this code and we could certainly do that and revise the list, is what I think I'm hearing that we might want to do. And there's a bit of discussion a bit later in the presentation about passive house construction as well, as being one of those options for that green building as well. So we can certainly do that as part of this hearing process or part of this code amendment process. We could take that up.
I do just want to add to that, one of the things we've been trying to avoid is having multiple definitions and multiple locations. So if we can, I'd be cautious about doing two different definitions on this one. We do have it in the code amendment for the housekeeping that we're working on right now.
And when are we seeing that?
I'm not sure, unfortunately, Benny.
Do you know?
Phase two.
It'll be the next package of housekeeping amendments. We're going to the Planning Commission with the first package in three weeks. So, it's the next thing that we're going to start working on. But I guess one thing, depending on how we want to structure the green building component here, and we could potentially switch out, at a minimum, we could go in and switch out the Green Globes element, I suppose, and put in passive house in place of Green Globes or something like that, but it would create that conflict that we're not sure what we're doing downtown, so it would have a, you'd have two different types of standards at this point.
The alternative is that you create the green building standard here and we remove it from the other.
Repeat it in the downtown.
I wouldn't even repeat it, I would reference it.
Yeah.
So, just so that you only have to change it once. So if we want to put it here and take it out of that, I'm fine, I just want to make sure that we have consistency across the code.
The one other thing that I wanted to mention regarding this height discussion is we were aware of the discussion last time where there was some interest in putting green building requirements, attaching green building requirements to any housing proposal, and we find it somewhat difficult, the way we have to use the green building requirements, they have to be an incentive-based program related to something. It can't be written as a new standard, but it can be written as a incentive to get something. This approach creates that incentive, so you can...
Can't be under state law, you're saying?
Yeah.
At the building code issue?
It's a conflict with the building code that we're trying to overcome. So we couldn't just say, we had trouble trying to come up with an idea that would say, like for example, if you're going to put housing in, it had to be green, green housing. We thought that was definitely a conflict with the code, but it's not a conflict according to our attorneys to do it in the way we've done it downtown. So that was why we were going this way.
You can give it as incentives, but you can't require it.
And the incentive can't be housing?
I'm sorry?
The incentive itself can't be, will let you build housing on the next three floors?
I think it becomes more difficult to do it that way. It's really a standard then.
Well, if you want to build one or whatever the minimum is, two floors of commercial, go for it. If you want to add a third, fourth, fifth floor, for residential, it needs to be green. That's not an incentive, that doesn't work.
Well, I mean, there we're talking about adding floors again. So we were trying to move it to floors rather than tied to the use, but I mean, Dan may have another opinion on whether he thinks there's another way to do it, but we've discussed it with Tim earlier and he was, he felt like our downtown approach didn't have a conflict with state law, so we wanted to just follow a similar pattern.
If I could, I think one of the other things that we talked about was that rather than providing an incentive for residential development, and what we're talking about is this innovation industrial zone, that we would incentivize the height, you know, the building height, and which may, if we get there, end up having some residential floors, certainly, but we're incentivizing the vertical development as opposed to using residential development as an incentive. It keeps us kind of in, I think, in that trajectory of keeping this incentive more with the construction rather than this use that we're having a difficult time wrangling.
So what you're looking at is you'd get additional X number of feet, not X number of floors.
Right.
If we went to 90 feet, that conceivably could be seven or eight, six to eight stories.
Sure.
Buildings.
Yes.
Which seems...
That's why we're talking about it.
Right.
There's a nine-floor building across the tracks from that.
I know, the manner, yeah.
Well, we were saying...
But you don't see it because it's...
Well, I see it, I live in the neighborhood.
Yeah, but it's also kind of down in a...
Same level as that.
The Planning Commission recommendation was the middle column here where the bonus would only kick in from the 65 to 90 feet, but it also had, that required residential and green building exactly the same as the downtown.
Right, whereas this way, we're not necessarily incenting residential.
Correct.
We don't necessarily want residential.
So, we tried to explore a different approach.
Well, at least residential out as much as possible with the jobs created.
Yeah, I like this concept.
Good, so we'll chew on that for a bit and continue. Okay. This summarizes what we, what we think the Council decided, or talked about for the Millport Mixed Use Overlay, so the question was...
Should have given a quiz to see if they...
Should I?
Everybody's talking the same thing.
So, generally, the Council does support the Millon Store, allowing the Millon Store to be able to rebuild on the site where it currently exists. And putting a possibly yes on allowing upper-floor residential through a Millport Mixed Use Overlay, it's why it says possibly yes, because I'm seeing a head shaking, so possibly yes. And then there was also a discussion of requiring live-work units as part of a mixed use development in the Millport Mixed Use Overlay. Okay. We also talked about a sunset provision, which essentially landed at a five-plus-three kind of situation where by the sunset date, whatever that date is, that a project would have to be developed, and by that we mean having received permits, and then occupancy would have to be achieved within three years of that. So that's kind of where that five-plus-three situation shows up. And that certificate of occupancy is kind of where we're landing with that, with that three. And then we did talk about some of the, some standards that we would be adding to on top of, you know, how would we be allowing for these mixed use developments to occur? And that's kind of where some of the new information that's coming up is being tied, where I will cover that. Affordable housing, green building standards, et cetera, and I will get to that in a second. But this is generally where I think we're, I think we were, on March 6th, anyway. That was a month ago, so we can come back and talk about that. All right. So, some of the new information that Council raised was first, additional resource protection and a setback from Johnson Creek. Talked about affordable housing, loft-style live-work space, and then the green building requirement and passive house as a specific type of green building development. So, development near Johnson Creek. What you see here on this map is what an expanded 100-foot water quality resource area would look like along Johnson Creek on that western side of McLaughlin. As we discussed at the February 20th hearing, the Natural Resources Code does have extensive language regulating activities within the water quality resource area. So again, this map illustrates what it would look like if we widened what is currently the 50-foot water quality resource area to 100 feet on Johnson Creek. I...
It's in the pack.
I think it's in our packet. Yeah, I have it on a later slide, so yes, I can grab that, but this doubles, it doubles the size of, yeah, of the 50. To be able to do this, though, to be able to actually widen it to the 100 feet, we can't just do that, we have to show that it in fact ought to be 100 feet wide, right? So we're, so there's a comprehensive natural resources inventory and additional goal five analysis. There's a lot of work that has to go into us being able to show that it ought to be that 100 feet wide. It would result in significant loss of developable area along the creek and would, could, I'll use, could likely result in court action by affected landowners in doing that, so we just sort of put that out there.
On the assessment that would have to be done to show that it should be...
Yeah.
The fact that it's, most of that extra 50 foot is concrete, how would that factor into that kind of an assessment?
It's a really good question, given that a lot of it's already developed, so there's, I'm not sure how that would affect that mapping scenario. Yeah, I don't know that answer, actually. It's a good question, though. And then a question did come up on the redevelopment of the Millon Store site and I have that outlined in the electric blue there, that unless work is identified as expressly exempt, any proposed work on that site would be subject to the provisions of the code. So, sort of even, you know, doing this redevelopment of the Millon Store site in the future would still be subject to whatever the code requirements are of...
Looks better than it looks now, is what you're saying.
It could. I would hope so, yes. Yes, it would. It would require an analysis of impacts, report identifying compliance with any of the approval criteria, so yes. the approval criteria, so yes, so it would, it would, it would have to comply with all of our, it's not exempt from 402, the, by redeveloping that site, so it would, it would need to meet those requirements. Regarding affordable housing, council expressed interest in requiring affordable housing in developments that would include residential units in this mixed-use overlay. We reviewed code requirements in a couple of different communities, including Park City, Utah, which does require deed-restricted affordable units. But staff reminds council that that requirement is, it's inclusionary zoning. In order to do that, it has to be enabled locally through an ordinance with language specifying the zones where that requirement would be applicable. And council did choose not to pursue inclusionary zoning when, when it passed the construction excise tax for affordable housing last year. So we're, chose not to do that, so we're just remind, respectfully reminding council.
So again, that could be, not be required, but it could be incentivized.
If there were housing allowed anywhere in the...
Yeah, if, yeah.
We're incentivizing affordable housing.
Like, we could use some of the money that we're collecting on the construction excise tax to buy down...
Well, I meant, like, with height.
Height, yeah.
Or any other sort of...
Right now, that's not one of the...
No, it's not, but it, could it be?
It could be.
Tie affordable housing to height bonuses? Is that sort of the question?
Yeah, well, like, say, take your model for the green building, 45 feet, and then to incentivize green building, that's the maximum unless you do green building or affordable, you know, housing. I'm just, I'm just wanting to get all the questions out there. I'm not necessarily advocating...
It's a great, it's a good question, and...
Gotcha, yeah.
Yeah. I may not be the one to answer it, probably have to have somebody else do that. Okay. All right.
I'd say what you could, yeah.
Council also expressed interest in having artist or maker live-work space as part of mixed-use developments, specifically in the MMU, but we have a question about where else you might want to apply that, if we go forward with that. The current zoning code contains really specific standards for live-work space. They're very prescriptive in how they're designed, and that currently would not permit that loft-style kind of open-floor plan, single-floor live-work type of unit. So we propose, if we're going to go down this route, that we would revise the current code to allow for that single-floor live-work unit. And I have a, we included in the staff report an underlying strikeout of what that code revision would look like, in order to basically take out, or it would actually just add a single-floor type of style of live-work unit.
Would that be just in the industrial area, just up there, or would it apply to the entire city?
It would apply to all live-work units.
Okay, I got you.
So if live-work were being proposed anywhere, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to do this multi-story...
You wouldn't have to do the vertical, you could do the...
Correct, right, right.
Gotcha, okay.
We researched codes that allow artist live-work space, to kind of get a sense of what, how they're designed or how they're regulated. Generally, the definition of artist live-work is a single-floor space that accommodates both studio workspace and living quarters, of course. Historically, that has, they've been in industrial buildings that have been retrofitted or basically just usurped and used for living space and, and artist space. So historically, they've been in already industrial buildings that are converted.
So there, even though the term artist is used there, I mean, that's a superfluous word, right?
It is, it is.
I mean, you know, when...
It connotes kind of that loft style, but...
When we spoke last time about that, and I spoke about creative space, I mean, it could be somebody building canoes, or somebody doing architecture, or somebody designing socks, or...
Absolutely.
Photography, or...
Essentially, the way the live-work code, the way our live-work code is written, it's, it allows for whatever use is allowed in the base zone, but what we're doing is we're kind of creating this live-work space. But, right, I shouldn't be just calling it artist live-work space, because obviously it's not just artists, but, right.
Didn't want to hone it in on something specific.
No, you're right. No, you're right to correct me. It's, I think, because it's sort of the housing unit style that we think about, it's sort of that open-floor plan, but you're right, thank you. In New York and Boston, loft spaces are built in manufacturing zones, and they can be used for living quarters, but in New York and Boston, they certify the art, and they are very specific to be artists, and they actually certify them. So there's this whole other process to make sure that it's definitely artists that are occupying those spaces. So they've added this whole level of bureaucracy to their process.
Why?
Because they want to make...
Well, they're essentially subsidized, too.
They are, and they want to...
Much cheaper than they would be per square foot.
And they want to make sure that it's artists that are actually using, using those spaces, right?
Because artists, you know, can't afford to live. They're poor.
Many people can't afford to live in New York.
I would just point out that staff is not recommending that we do a certification process for our units. Okay. There are many design aspects of live-work space that's covered in the Oregon Specialty Structural Code, that I included, that excerpted section, it's currently numbered 419. I don't know what it'll be numbered next year, but it's section 419.
So regarding that, it had recommended no more than five employees, and your code, you have no more than three. Was there a reason you down, downzoned the employee number?
I don't know that, that's in the existing code, so...
That's in our current existing code?
Right, right.
Okay.
I didn't propose that change, so I'm not sure why there is an inconsistency with the live-work, the Oregon live-work code. It's probably something we should make consistent, yeah. We, there's been a lot of, there's quite a bit of research in sort of what are the kinds of things that, that one of these live-work kind of loft spaces ought to have, and there's a whole list in the staff report, but some of the key aspects, open-floor plan, really durable surfaces, you know, heavy-load floors, so they're constructed to be able to take weight of, you know, machinery or anything like that, higher ceilings than typical, obviously soundproofing, ventilation that can take care of if someone's using paints or that kind of thing, ample power, more power, depending on what kind of machinery or equipment is being used, a freight elevator for large pieces or large equipment, plumbing, things that are, can be really flexibly moved around, slop sinks, you know, that kind of thing. So there are some differences between these kinds of units and a more traditional, just a residential unit that could, you could still have a home occupation in it, of course, but these are really, seem to be designed a bit more specific for bigger things and heavier things to be happening in those, in those spaces.
Are these things required?
No, these are, these are things that we were seeing as part of, as sort of best practices, and, but I spoke specifically to the folks in Boston, and they are using them more as design guidelines, and they're not codifying them as standards, because there, there are some, some certain things that they're looking for, like minimum score footages and some, some key things, but not all of these aspects. If you're building a live-work space that's supposed to be used for these kinds of folks, then you really want, you need to build them this way, otherwise you're not going to get those kinds of folks. But they're not putting them into code, yeah. We were also looking at some examples of some of these buildings that are sort of new construction, live-work, as opposed to the retrofits of existing industrial buildings. And one of the examples that we found, and was recommended to us to take a look at, is in Alexandria, Virginia. They're called the E-lofts. They renovated a vacant 14-story office building, so it's not a new construction, but it was an office building that they retrofitted. And one of the key questions that they came up with, and the reason why we're asking this is because we think this might be something that we want to talk about here for hours, would the city permit mixed-use live-work on the same floor in a building? And what we mean by that, and what they were trying to get at, was to be providing options for three very specific target groups. Couples who wanted lots of living space, work-at-home folks, singles and couples that are working at home, or small businesses of 10 employees or less. So they were really targeting three different kinds of groups of folks in a building like this. And the developer told city officials, and I have no reason to think this isn't true, because this sort of just happened, three-quarters of U.S. companies are 10 employees or less. So these are those kinds of small businesses. So the question that the developer asked the city officials in Alexandria was, would the city allow a mix of these three uses on the same floor? So you could have units that folks are just living in, are living in, working in, or just working in on the same floor of the building.
Floor.
Yes, the same floor. And the city said yes, so they built it. And this is an example of a just shy of 1,000-square-foot unit that can be used in three different ways, and it's the exact same unit, designed exactly the same way. So on the far left, you have a live-work unit, so there's a bedroom, and then the live-work space is kind of the big, open living space. And in the middle, you're just living in there. And you'll see that the only thing that's changing in any of these are the labels for any of these spaces. So the walking closet in the middle, in the live-space, was a walking closet or a workroom in the live-work example. And then in the far right, where it's the work-only, it's just a workspace, no one's living there, well, now that's an office conference room instead of a bedroom. It's just an open workspace as opposed to a living room, and the closet is a workroom instead of a closet. But it's, it's interchangeable, the way the layout, the floor plans were laid out. And so we just thought of this as an example of a way that we might provide even more flexibility in trying to attract different kinds of folks into a mixed-use building where we're requiring, or where we're going to require live-work. The other piece of this is this idea of how would we, in fact, be requiring live-work tenancy, right? I mean, that's obviously the goal, but at the same time, how could we, as staff, make sure that a business registration is required for every tenant? I mean, just trying the upkeep and the enforcement of something like that would be, would be really difficult. But if, by creating the opportunity, and again, this is just an example, but by creating the opportunity for these kinds of businesses, and, and this idea of having a solely workspace, you know, within there, someone doesn't necessarily have to live there, they could be running a small business, you know, out of that space and living elsewhere. And from what I was seeing, certainly on the website for this particular building, I couldn't find floor plans for a lot of the different units because there weren't any available, because the units were sold. I could only get floor plans from ones that I could actually get a unit, so, and there were a lot of them that I couldn't look at anymore because they were sold out. So, and this is brand-new construction, some of these units will be available later next month, so this is all pretty current. So as far as our, so for our recommendation for live-work, that's a question that we would like to find out from council, is that something that, when we're talking about live-work, and if we're going to be requiring live-work, is that a format that we might consider? So as part of our recommendation, particularly for a mixed-use building in the MMU, we think requiring one floor, or the equivalent of one floor of live-work would work. When we were talking specifically, or thinking specifically about the new building that we saw the plans for, for the Millen store, kind of that redevelopment, and I know Jerry Basinger is here, and he'll be able to speak to this, too, but one of the things we understood from them is the, from that construction, that first floor above the retail component is built in such a way that it has that concrete podium construction, so that floor, for that first floor, is already going to be that heavier load floor, because it's that first one on top of that, that retail component. And then the upper floors for somebody, that would be a more traditional wood-frame kind of construction, and would be the more resident, solely residential units. But we thought we would sort of, kind of start with this idea of that first floor, that one floor of live-work in the, in the mixed-use overlay. For a minimum ceiling height, somewhere 10 to 12 feet, we think, you know, it should be higher than a traditional residential, but it doesn't need to be 14 or 16 feet high either. Typically, a 10 or 12-foot minimum ceiling height for those live-work units is adequate in what we're seeing in, in other buildings as well.
Do you remember what they were in the, in the New York?
New York building, they're 14 feet.
They were 14.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I envisioned, something like that.
Yeah, they've had a lot of people wanting to be able to live in there, and they're not allowing them.
I think if, yeah, if we had that in Milwaukee, there'd be a lot of people wanting to...
Right, right. This idea of having within the, and these are sorts of, the kinds of things that we thought we ought to have actually in the code. So of all those lists of things, you know, really boil it down to, you know, again, requiring an open-floor plan, so having as, you know, as few walls as possible within the unit. And then this notion of the minimum unit size, and, you know, that previous example that we saw was that general, essentially 1,000 square feet. The unit sizes that, you know, we're seeing in some of these other loft spaces or live-work spaces are, tend to be larger, because they are, they're intended to be for more activity or things are happening there. It's also a really oversized apartment, too, if someone wanted to actually just live in it, but it's providing that studio space or that workspace for a live-work unit. Or if someone wanted to run an office out of there, you could easily have five or six employees, you know, in your office if you were running just a business out of one of these live-work units. So we're sort of throwing that out there as a, as a talking point for requiring a minimum unit size, to make sure that they are, in fact, large enough for this proposed use of this live-work, of this live-work space. And then again, finally, that recommendation that we revise our existing live-work code with those couple of minor revisions to make sure that we can, that this type of building, this unit design would be permitted in our existing code, and would be permitted throughout the city, that we wouldn't be prescribing that two-story live-work, live-work unit. And then finally, in the new information discussion was, so again, the proposed code includes green building for height, for height bonus, and right now, we're, the language was mirroring the green building language that we have in the other parts of the code. But there was some discussion or a question raised at the last hearing about tying mixed-use development to a different kind of green building, so we're sort of circling back to this idea of adding passive house construction as, as a type of green building construction, and it could be included in the menu of options for, for green building, for the, for the bonus. The, and passive house construction, through the research that I did, type of, it's a type of high-performance and efficient green building, so it's really about energy conservation as a construction type. It's used in both residential and commercial. It's more typically in residential, but commercial and manufacturing is also being built with this construction type. And the idea is that it reduces heating and cooling energy consumption by 80 to 90% were the numbers I was seeing as compared to conventional, conventional construction structures. The regulations and standards are based on insulation values, the use of sunlight, and an airtight infrastructure. I have to read my notes to make sure I get this right. And an airtight infrastructure to maintain a steady temperature within the structure throughout the year. So there's very little change between winter and summer, it's all, it stays at a base, and then you kind of work from there. Walls and roofs are heavily insulated, windows are double and often triple-glazed, preventing heat loss and trapping sunlight within the structure at the same time. So that's sort of the general idea of passive house construction. And again, exceptionally high levels of insulation, airtight building envelope, ventilation with highly efficient heat or energy recovery. So those are kind of the high, the highlights of passive house construction. And there are a lot of examples of non-residential, even though it's called passive house. They might want to, maybe there's a way to change that word, because it's, because schools, hospitals, office buildings, and supermarkets have all been built with this construction. I found a lot of examples in Europe, actually. In fact, in Frankfurt, Germany, they passed legislation ensuring that all new buildings built for the city had to be, had to be built to the passive house standard, and that was back in '07. So they've been doing this for a long time.
I don't think that's the only city either. I think Belgium or someplace, there's another city.
Yeah, Belgium, Brussels has a standard mandatory for all new buildings of any kind, as well as retrofits, whether public or private, and whether residential or non-residential as of January 2015, have to be built to the standard. So if it can be done in Brussels, it can be done here, right? So one of...
Don't we have, isn't Howie's house passive house? We have a passive house in Milwaukee, yeah.
Please talk.
Yeah, my best friend lives in one, too, so it's, but, so that was, it was actually, it was, it was fun to research, and so adding this to, you know, the list, either as a menu option for the list of green building standards, certainly makes, makes a lot of sense, we think. Okay, so, questions for council? Do you have any questions about the code amendments, the design standards, the height, you know, those things that we, that we talked about sort of at the beginning of this? And then questions about our, does the council want to adopt the Millport mixed-use overlay? We've asked this a few times, so gonna ask again. Do we want to do this, and do we want to allow residential uses in that area? And I think maybe a follow-up question ought to be, is that, should that overlay be as we've been proposing it, thinking of it sort of as that larger triangle area in the southwest? Or is it one lot? You know, we want to understand, if, if yes, then where? And within that, where we've been talking about sort of that height bonus with the green construction, do you want to require live-work units as part of that? Are you amenable to this idea of having sort of those multiple kinds of uses within that live-work floor? If, if yes, then this... If yes, then this, I should have done another chart, I think, for this. And then we would also ask, are these the kinds of things, if we're going with this, with the overlay and these sorts of requirements in the overlay, is that something that you want to see applied to the mixed-use area that we sort of already have thought about near the Tacoma Station? Because it is, we're, it's, it's a mirror to that, to that zone.
It's the same, it's the same concept, right? We're trying to--
It is the same.
Trying to increase the amount of employment throughout the zone.
Employment.
The enemy. I disagree that that was the outcome of the process, but we can have a conversation about that.
Okay. They're saying that requiring live-work in the mutza as well, requiring?
That's what I'm asking.
She's asking, do we want to do that?
Since we're, yeah, since we're talking about, you know, the mixed-use overlay essentially mirrors the mutza area as a--
As it is right now.
Right, as the code is proposed. So, if we're, we're sort of calling out some specific things within the overlay, and we're asking, do you want to go ahead and apply those things to the, to the mutza as well? Again, this all is predicated on, we have the overlay to begin with, so, but some of these, you know, I guess an option, if the council chose to not move forward with the overlay, some of these concepts might be something that you want to apply to the mutza anyway. You know, maybe the live-work is something that you want to consider up there as well. But, lots of questions.
So, it's been six weeks since our last hearing, and we have no submission from Mr. Stark or Mr. Dietrich?
As far as--
As far as, I mean, they've sat here and listened to us discuss all this, and as far as whether they thought that was something they wanted to build?
Mr. Basinger is here, who represents--
I thought we were just deliberating tonight. I didn't think we were having--
We said in the thing that we were, setting testimony, so--
So, I'm gonna let Mr. Basinger speak for, for Mr. Dietrich.
And I think it's appropriate, we're, we're changing on the line. I do have one question.
Yeah.
So, I want to go back to the, the question that Shane was asking earlier. If, if we are saying, oh, by the way, you can do residential if you do this, if you build a specific style of green building, how is that less of a incentive-based thing than saying you can have two more floors if you build a green building?
Right.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I don't, I don't think it is less of an incentive, as long as you're not allowing residential by right. You're only allowing residential if you--
If you do X.
Choose to do X. It's a, it's a use-based incentive rather than a structural height.
Well, it's both, right? Because you're not going to get the residential without the height.
Yeah, that's true, too, yeah. I can't see why, I can't think of a reason why you couldn't do that, why it would be a building code issue, as long as you can comply with the existing building code with those kinds of structures. I mean, if it's, if you just can't do it without complying with the current building, in compliance with the current building code, that would be a problem.
Right.
That I don't know.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
I don't have any right now.
Thank you, Vera.
Thank you.
So, have we received any additional correspondence on the topic?
No correspondence in six weeks, no.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anyone wish to speak in support of the proposed amendments? I have two here. The council will now take, I have three here, but they're not all in--
Oh, they're not all in support.
Support. There's one in opposition, two in support.
Okay, sorry.
Right. I'm being really specific tonight. So, does anyone wish to speak in support of the proposed amendments besides these two? The council will now take public testimony on the hearing topic. I will recognize speakers, and any questions should be addressed through me. When you come to the table, state your name and city of residence for the record. Presentation times for all speakers will be limited to, will be limited. Representatives of groups will be limited to 15 minutes, individuals will be limited to three minutes. Please confine your remarks to the proposed amendments, avoid repetition, and irrelevant So, let's start with Jerry Basinger.
Mayor Gama, members of the city council. My name is Jerry Basinger, Portlandian. So, I think Vera's given a great outline of the issues before you, most of which were raised in the March 6 hearing, and I'm going to just kind of tick through them, our thoughts, and I am representing the Dietrichs, and Peter's out of town, or he'd be here tonight Affordable housing. We have done a fair amount of research into what the opportunities are in Clackamas County. There are, at present, six or seven sources of funding or incentives in Clackamas County. There are a number of affordable housing developers, mostly nonprofits, who specialize in tapping those sources to get things built. And it's difficult, in the experience that I've had in affordable housing, to get the project, to get enough incentives. You can't, you're not typically going to get it from a single source, you'll have to be successful in tapping three or four or five sources to make a project, be able to incentivize it enough so that it pencils. So, if, I guess, you know, I would urge you to look hard at incentives that would be financial incentives to do this. Height is not going to do it, but, because if we don't have the height, there's probably not a project on any basis. So, you know, we were looking, and we based our models on the 65-foot limit with possible incentives to go one more floor. That allows us to stay in economical wood-frame construction. Green building standards, it's kind of the same thing. You can build a passive house for apartments. It's been done, it's been done in Portland, it's been done in Portland as a test case or an experimental building, one which, by normal developer standards, would not have been built based on the return on investment. Now, maybe it will in this case. Again, there's people that would pay extra, I think, to live in such a, such a unit. However, if you kind of lower the boomback 45 feet, that means retail plus two floors, that's not enough incentive, there's not enough basis created by the fact that we can put residential in there to create enough additional value that Mill Ends could afford to redevelop using concrete podium construction. Again, that's expensive construction, and you need the, kind of the uptick in basis of at least four floors of residential to have a good shot at making the project work financially.
You're saying, without green building standard? I mean, I didn't--
What I'm saying is, is we understood the height limit to be 65 feet, and we have a project that we can put retail plus four floors. If there's incentive to go to five floors, that would be great, and we'd, we'd have to look at that, because you can go five floors still wood-frame under the code, and that last floor is like a bonus, and it certainly would create some value that would be worth investing either in additional green building standards or in affordability.
So, you meant retail plus three floors? You said--
I know, I mean retail plus four floors.
So, you're talking about going to six floors if--
Yes, potentially.
With the, okay, got it.
The expanded resource area, that staff did a good job of discussing that, that would kind of be a deal breaker. I just, when I saw their map, I envisioned a six-story Dutch Brothers. We have designed around the 50-foot buffer and think we can make that work, and would like to see that maintained. Finally, live-work, we actually met with Denny and Vera last week and kind of walked through that. In general, it's workable, and I wouldn't go down the path of having a minimum floor area. The market is a pretty remarkable arbiter of what's appropriate. There are two buildings I'm familiar with in Northwood, in the Pearl District, both are conversions of industrial buildings, both have the high ceilings, probably on the order of 12 feet, and both are, I know the buildings because I have two friends that have their offices in the buildings. One of them is an attorney who downsized his practice out of a regular office, and now he, he has a couple of employees that come in, but he works out of his residence, so he lives there, so it's live-work truly. And the total area of his unit is about two-thirds the size of this room, something around 600 square feet. And it's a gorgeous office. I'd love to have my own practice in such a thing when I downsize. The other is a financial consultant, again, she has a couple of employees that come there, and she sees clients in there in a regular base. Now, that's at a professional level. Howard and Nancy both testified that they believed that some of the tenants in, in an apartment building above the store would be people who are their own customers. And when I see their customers, those are makers and artists, people who create things using the resources of the store. And to me, that's the logical live-work tenant who could live there and set up a loom in the front room instead of a sofa, so. So, our objective here is to create a path. I mean, initially, it was to allow Bill Ends to redevelop on this site. It is a difficult site. Anything you can do to help us overcome those difficulties and not put new ones in the past, I mean, we want a financially feasible project. They're a for-profit business, and it won't happen if we can't figure out how to, how to make it pencil.
So, I want to clarify something. I think I just heard you say that you don't want a minimum space size for the live-work units.
Correct.
How then would you-- Differentiate the live-work units from the apartments that will be above it.
The open floor plan, so essentially, the plan I envisioned would probably be about the shape of two-thirds of this room, with the narrow end being all glass, the outside wall, kitchen, bathroom toward the back, provision for a sleeping area if they choose to have one, but not walled off, and so it's completely open. And then I suggested in our discussion with Denny and Vera that we could also set it up so that you could get two units adjacent. The reason for the, you know, the, the limit is if we essentially double the size of the live-work units and it's on the bottom floor, then they'll have to start transferring loads from the floors above that have walls, maybe that are closer. The last time we did that in an apartment building, we ended up with significant increased cost due to the fact that we had to overcome our inability to line things up vertically by putting in additional red steel to transfer the, the loads down to the bearing level, which is the concrete podium.
So, you wouldn't be doing four over two, you'd be doing four over one, so that your live-work units, you're thinking are just, just stick-frame construction?
Stick-frame, probably a taller ceiling, though I don't know if we can go to 12 with the 65-foot limit. If I keep the height of retail at around 18 feet clear, that gives me a 20-foot podium, four floors, one of them can be a foot or two more, and still keep within the 65-foot limit. I've got to put a parapet, and the roof has to slimmer, it's all the technical things, but I have looked at it in, in a, four residential floors over the retail, that pretty much uses up all of the available height to 65.
So, that would be just the height by right, so you're not talking about--
Right.
--being a passive building to earn another story.
Exactly, so if we look at passive building, then, then that's a way that, that we can add to the number of units. May have to talk to you about varying the parking requirement, because I've also looked at how many units I can get in there with the current parking code, and I can't park a fifth floor unless we get relief for the minimum parking requirement. But, again, that's down the road, I'm not quite ready to talk about that, as there's an, I have looked at it, so.
Okay, so, if you were defining what the live-work space, what the difference was, code-wise, between live-work and the regular apartments, you're just saying it's a foot or two taller and it's--
There's, there's several other differences defined in the code, so higher floor load. The building code allows up to five occupants, or five employees, in a live-work space.
But as far as physical difference?
Yes.
You could put five people in it, 750 square foot apartments.
Yes, yeah. If it was an apartment only, I'd be dealing with a lower live-floor load. The office load is about double what the residential load is, so that's why we would put it on the podium level where we can easily accommodate that additional load. The mechanical system requirements are different, so I have to put more air changes in, which would likely require a different kind of a system than the least expensive.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Regarding the affordable housing, you're saying that you've looked around, and it's potentially doable if you receive funding from other sources?
Yes.
Okay. And did you, I, did you say the city should be one of those?
Well, I understand that the city has a program, it was referred to as CET, I'm not sure what that stands for--
Destruction Excise Tax.
Okay. I'm not sure if you've designated how those funds are to be spent, but if they're to be spent for affordable housing, definitely incentivize it, whether it's this project or any other, because you're asking a developer to build things at market. Nobody will give us free materials and free labor to build a building, or free land for that matter.
Well, I would say that you've come forth, and you've asked for extraordinary changes to this zone, and when Mr. Dietrich testified at the very beginning, he said, "I want to build a building that has residential, that's going to be green, and it's going to have affordable housing." And those were big for me, personally. And now, what I think I'm hearing you say is, "Maybe I'll do these things if I get certain funding from a source, and maybe I'll do green if you give me this." And now, and then you're even, you're getting into the parking. Well, I may have to come back and, I mean, it's, to me, I'll tell you--
I don't, I don't know about parking.
It sounds like, it sounds like it's changing the story from when Mr. Dietrich testified, and said, "Please let us have residential, here's what I'm going to do." And that doesn't sound to me--
I believe Mr. Dietrich testified that he would consider affordable housing.
Twice affordable housing, I heard the same thing.
But in any event, this is not, I don't want, you know, I'm not going to hear the, so on the green, it's the same thing, if, you would do it if, if you received certain incentives?
I think he--
No, he's saying--
Bonus floors, it sounded like--
We'd have to look at a bonus. Again, the objective was to figure out a way that Mill Ends could afford to stay on this site and redevelop, and they can do that if they can get the housing.
But there were also, well, again, I won't debate you on it, but--
Yeah.
Okay, any other?
I don't think they're questions.
Not right now.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise.
Three?
Yeah.
I have a business in Milwaukee, and I live in downtown Milwaukee, and I was on the North Main Industrial Area Advisory Committee. I am in support of the Millport mixed-use overlay, and I am, I am really, I've spoken to Mr. Dietrich and Peter Stark, and been in touch with Mr. Basinger's architectural firm, and if you haven't seen, they've done several mixed-use properties in several states, Oregon, Texas, California, and you can look-- And you can look, so I trust their experience. I am not a builder. I don't know if any of you have architectural building experience. And so I've learned a lot about the costs of green building and passive homes and the different codes for the mixed use. And I'm really proud of them for looking into the costs of putting this innovative space and being willing to spend that extra money to add this innovation floor. And so I've listened to some of the things that they're planning about, well, we're going to look into this. And I might have been the voice that you heard that said green and low income, because I can speak very passionately. And I apologize if I've made that sound like Howard Dietrich said, "I'm definitely doing that." I know they're still looking into grants. And I also know from a builders and an investors and a retail development, they need to make this pencil out. And all of your mixed-use buildings, the Coma Station needs to pencil out. So you'll get these same sorts of comments about the people building. It's very difficult to be low-income housing and green at the same time. The green buildings tend to cost a little more to rent. And as far as the size, if you haven't looked at Everett Street Lofts, I have artist friends that are there, they're about 600 square feet is all. And they require, to be on that first floor on the mixed-use retail of Everett Street Lofts, you have to sign in your lease that you will be open to the public once a month. So some of my artist friends have left, because they didn't want to do that anymore. Some have, some are still there, some have moved up to the other floors and now show at other galleries. Because, so there are leasing requirements to help you keep those innovators that can be, maybe, I don't know if that's written in your code or how you do that, but that's one way without making the size. But I really think, again, that this is a great addition to our NMI. It's right across from Waverly. I've spoken to the manager at the Waverly Apartments, about 350 units, and she's of the Waverly family. She said, "Oh, I support it very much. It's not competition for us. We don't, we have a waiting list, months long." So again, I trust Jerry Basinger. I like this project, and I hope you'll support it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise?
Sean Hood in opposition to ask a question. Thank you, guys, for letting me speak at the last minute. I'm a representative with Alpine Food Distributing. We've been in the Milwaukee area for, going on seven years now. What was enticing to us to move to this area, logistics, and we're moving into an industrial business park that had been occupied by industry for 50 years now. Some of the concerns we have coming upon us, hearing so much about residential and mixed use to the business park, is the impact on our commerce. And I'm really not so much opposed to the development of mixed use and residential, but what it may occur and push into further into the industrial park and impact my business. Currently, today, we run a 24/7 operation. We employ 150 employees. We have a payroll of over $16 million with 200 million-plus sales. Can the city replace that with mixed use and residential by pushing us out? And residential's great, but noise complaints, things like that will occur down the road that I see. And as a growing business that will be 200-plus employees within the next five years and hopefully 300-plus million in sales and increased salaries, I hope that we can, you know, be beneficial to the growth of the economy with, within the city of Milwaukee. But I don't think residential's going to get us there. I think it's going to end up pushing us away. I want to say we're probably one or two of the largest landowners now. We just came under contract and purchased another seven acres from Morgan Transfer. So that puts us at about 12 to 15 acres of land in the business park. So I just ask you guys to consider your guys' plans and what you're doing and what the impact it will be to Alpine Food Distributing, its ownership, and where our growth will be with the city and Glackamas County.
Do you have trucks going in and out?
Yeah, our commerce, we're running semi-trailers, refrigerated trailers, so they're noisy, they're running. We have refrigeration units at our facilities, so those are constantly running, a lot of noise.
But do you have deliveries, trucks coming in and out 24 hours a day during?
Yes, correct.
At night, is basically the question.
Yeah. My other concern is road conditions. That's another big havoc on our commerce and our cost. We've had a lot of damage to tires. You know, I don't want to slander anybody, but I'm really not impressed by the roadworks that are done in Milwaukee. When we moved in, there was a gentleman that came into our facility a second weekend. They did some major road improvement on our streets, and then my understanding is he went away within our first year here. I think you guys could drive around some of the business parks and some of the scabbing and rehab that's done to some of the roads are actually worse than what they were before they started the repairs. You know, we're seeing over 100, 125 trucks, semi-trailers down Omark off of Mailwell coming in on a daily basis and then with our employees. We're very tight for parking, limited, and we knew that coming into this business park. And we've approached over 13 different business owners around the business park over the last five years to purchase property just purely for parking. And that's really what incentivized us to purchase the property from OTC, was really about parking. We had no business going in there at the time, but we've made it work, but it's really to accommodate our growth and parking in the business.
And you said you had 12 to 15 acres in MIA? That's where it is? It's all there?
Yeah.
And 125 trucks a day? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah, we have over 70 assets of ourselves. We cover the whole West Coast, 10 western states out of our single distribution center. So a lot of our, a lot of our fleet is out, gone over the road for quite a few days, but we are inbound and our local distributors that pick up off our dock on a daily basis accommodates most of that.
You said something about Omark. That's the place, that's the area out on International Way? No? When you were talking about the 125 trucks and you said inbound, I thought you said Omark?
Omark is the street off of Mailwell, Omark.
Oh, that's the name of the street?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought Omark was out of International Way. Okay, my mistake. Sorry.
Yeah, so our facility is behind where the old theater was, the old Rudy Wilhelm facility, the rounded building. So basically, that whole back-end corner, with the exception of Pendleton, is, we own all that property back there.
So there used to be, that's, you owned the old, what was it, envelope place or something?
No, the, we were actually under contract with them, and they ended up pulling away and leasing that property a year ago, so we're across the street from them.
Just, sorry, this, just to sort of orient myself, not off of Hannah Harvester, behind Hiber Garbage and Recycling.
So we're north, just north of that, right on the other side of the rail.
And you don't have any property that's adjacent to 224 down there?
No.
It's just, okay.
Yeah. One of the ownerships would like to raise concern about the smell of marijuana with the edibles or the manufacturing plant that's next to us. It's just a very high potency, and we'd like to, you know, see if they could use a little bit more filtration in there, as we have our banks and our customers that come into our conference room, and that is the first pugnet smell that they, that hits them.
Well, I'm sure the city manager's making note of that, but I would definitely encourage you to, we put in pretty strenuous code about their air, their requirement to contain their odors. So I would call our code enforcement people and complain.
Call code enforcement.
Every time.
Yeah. And the last issue I have, which has already been addressed with the city, is with that, with that facility being put in next door, there, there's a piece of property owned by the city that, what we had as an access road for our facility has now been taken up by compressors and HVAC and egress. We now do not have access to the southern part of our facility, so we have a safety issue with no access to egress out of the backside of that building, and we don't have any serviceable area to pull service trucks into our facility. So there's an easement in between the properties that's, I believe, about 15 to 20 feet, and that was taken up by, I don't know if it's an ADA ramp or...
It was an emergency exit.
Emergency exit on there. Yeah. And that was the only access we had to access the backside of the south end of our property. And now we, we can't get back there to do any service work.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
That's all the cards I have. Anybody else?
Can we take a break?
Sure. Do we want to hear, do you want to take a break before we hear from?
Do you want to see if the staff has any?
Your staff? Oh, I don't care either way. They're not in the room.
Yeah?
Oh, no, Vera's there.
She's hiding.
Okay.
Does staff have any response to the testimony? Do, does any member of council have any questions regarding testimony at this point?
Not really.
Nope.
No? If there are no further questions from council, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard? The public testimony portion of the public hearing on North Milwaukee Industrial Area Plan and Code Amendments file numbers CPA-2017002 and ZA-2017003 is hereby closed. Do you guys want to take?
Yeah.
10 minutes? 5 minutes? What?
8 o'clock is okay.
7 minutes? 8 o'clock? All right.
5 minutes.
And take a short break. Be back at 8 o'clock.
I can take my coat off. I'm too cold.[1317.33]
I am really opposed to considering that we would apply the standards that we might come up with for the overlay to the station area. To the, I'm not even sure how we got there. This was part of the NME, the employment zone. That was a recommendation that came out of this public process that went on for a year. We're now considering housing as a potential to try to, you know, to try to compromise here, you know, from what we're hearing about the, maybe some of the potential fiscal, you know, the realities, economic realities of this site. We were not having a conversation about the Tacoma Station area and putting on some additional requirements there. The community was supportive through this process and the previous, the Tacoma Station Area Planning Process of just outright mixed-use residential because it is directly adjacent to the station.
There's already some housing there.
And there is already housing there directly across the highway from that station. A brand-new place went in and it's all residential. So, I'll just leave that point there. The Dietrichs own a lot of property in Milwaukee. The Dietrichs either owned by his entities, the Bishop's entities, they own a lot of property. None of it's been, and a lot of it's already zoned for mixed-use residential. Nothing's been done. I'm with you. I'm not sure that unless we really incentivize, you know, unless we get at the affordable housing, I'm not sure that we're dealing with, I'm feeling a little, I guess what I'm feeling really frustrated about is the testimony tonight that we heard that affordable housing isn't really an option. And I'm very disappointed to hear that. So, I just want to sort of reiterate what you said about that. I'm feeling very disappointed about the change in testimony and what the goals of this site are from that end of the table.
So, just to play devil's advocate, what would be the amount and the level of affordability that would make you comfortable? So, in other words, how many units or percentage of the building or however you want to measure that? And affordability level, 60%, 80%?
20 at 80.
20 units?
20% at 80, AMI.
I hadn't thought about actual numbers, but 20, 80.
Yeah, that seems to be what's in some other places, 20%.
Yeah, I think that's, I'm trying to remember whether Portland's was 10 or 20. Alma, do you remember? Portland's, is it 10 or 20% that they're doing on their IZ?
You have to open up the...
Do I have, to get that question answered, do I need to open up public cost money?
Yes.
Well, how about this? We set some, we've talked about this before, about some requirements that we would have for buildings in the area, and it's 20, 80.
What?
Some goals for...
I don't remember specific numbers on that.
You mean with the vertical housing tax rate? No.
I don't remember.
Yeah, okay.
I mean...
He's, can you open up the hearing just for one question? That's fine.
It was looking like my city manager was in Google mode.
No, we actually have the answer if you want it.
Okay.
You just need to open it.
Can I have a motion to open?
I move to open the testimony.
Oh, just a second.
Has been moved, a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard. Public hearing is reopened.
Alma Flores, Community Development Director. So, your question was, what's the percentage for City of Portland's inclusionary zoning? So, their inclusionary zoning kicks in for development with units of 19 or more.
Right.
And they're required to provide 20%.
At 80, right?
At 80% or below.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, I thought, okay. I just couldn't remember if it was 20 or 10. Thank you.
I make a motion to close.
I second.
It's been moved, a second to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, public hearing is closed.
I pretty much echo what all of you have said. I came tonight figuring, you know, and thinking in my brain and in my heart that while I didn't truly, I still don't like the idea of residential in an employment area, that this was an exception and on that one piece of property where Mill End Store would be, it could be a catalyst building. It could be something that, you know, folks would look at, you know, for years and say, "Man, that's what I want to do, you know, do something really, really great." But what I heard was not only no affordable housing, but I was sure that I heard that green building was not something that, you know, they wanted to even seek an additional height bonus for doing, that that wasn't within their, that those kinds of things that we really, from the beginning, had been led to expect would be part of that. But whether they are or not, if we were to do anything, I am not in favor of putting an overlay over that whole section, but only if we were to do anything, it would be over only where the Mill End Store and their parking lot property is, that one piece of property.
So, you are advocating for spot zoning? You're opposed to spot zoning?
And he's opposed to it, right. Yep.
Perfect.
I'm opposed to spot zoning, too.
Right. But, you know, in, yeah. And I still like the idea of creative space if there were ever to be any residential in that area, because it is a job-producing area and that is one way to sort of do two good things at once. And I like the idea of having affordable housing. We've got to be able to provide affordable housing and developers need to recognize that as we all move forward and find ways to help us make that happen.
So, I mean, it doesn't sound like everybody's exactly in the same place, but it sounds to me like there's enough skepticism that I hate the idea of staff spinning their wheels to try and write code that'll create these conditions when we have no reason to think the applicant, the requestor is going to meet those conditions.
The marker's not going to move.
You know, that's my concern here at this point, is not, this is dragged on forever and ever. And, you know, I think it is, I mean, we heard that last time, that it was going to be hard code to write. And I guess I hate to impose on staff writing code to create all these conditions that would get the things that you guys would find acceptable if, we have no reason to think that anybody, that that's ever going to fly or ever going to pencil.
Well, and also, just to be clear on IZ, if I'm remembering it correctly, you can require it, but you're also required to somehow subsidize, to somehow help.
Yes.
In Portland's IZ, there's parts of IZ that you're required to...
I don't know.
Trying to remember exactly what it is, but there's some quid pro quo there. Financial quid pro quo, I recall what they are. Yeah. So, just keep bearing that in mind as well.
Yeah, that's what I remember, too. That's what I remember, too.
Is that because of the state law or because that's the way City Portland set it up?
No, state law.
The way they wrote the state law. The state law was very, very developer-friendly.
Okay.
So, if we set aside the whole idea of housing in any of the NME that's now currently designated as NME, we leave much alone, you know, because that's already mixed-use and that, then what are the issues that we still need to deal with there? The minimum height, the, you know, are there other...
Or the incentive for green construction?
Well, let's, before we wander off that, let's either come to a decision or, let's come to a decision. Are we going to write this code in a way that we will be comfortable putting residential at that end of the industrial area? Or aren't we going to write that code and just say, "Nope, you can't have housing"?
I mean, I guess I think it's a missed opportunity. I feel like, you know, we were making these concessions, we were coming up with ideas. And I do feel like we've heard from a representative, from the only developer who's asking for this, that what we've, what we're considering isn't going to work. So, I agree with you. I don't like, we've got a very busy staff. They are overworked right now. But if we could actually get the loft work idea in that zone, I'd be okay with that because I think that we were, we were coming up with something that was still in the spirit of the NME.
And it would be unique, and I think it would be a catalyst project. I think that's, you know, I've said it so many times again, but I think the industrial area eventually wants to be an area where we're seeing more innovative styles of employment, more innovative styles of, because things are changing, right?
Employment opportunities, right. They're going to continue to change. Look at all the jobs that exist right now that five years ago, and of course, for sure 10 years ago, but even five years ago weren't even here. And with electronics and robotics and all of those kinds of things, there's no telling where that could go. And it would be great for us to be able to have an area that is the opportunity site for those kinds of things. And so, opening it up more and perhaps even with putting code in that permits, you know, the live-work, you know, and that kind of thing. And if after the code is in that, you know, Mr. Dietrich or any other person who owns property there thinks that that's what they want to do, then they have the ability to do it if it's in the area that's done that.
You're saying make it available, not require that every...
No.
Right.
Yeah, you don't have...
And are you talking about the whole NME area?
I wasn't...
Just the...
Whatever we're...
Whatever that quadrant is.
MMU overlay. Yeah.
Millport mixed-use overlay.
Millport mixed-use overlay, okay. So, that bottom...
Just the quadrant?
Yeah.
Well, I agree with Lisa, too, Councilor Beatty, that, and what Councilor Hackner said. Our staff's busy and if we're, I mean, there's no point in spending a lot of time creating code and working on it if we don't really think that there's any serious interest in doing the things that we thought we were getting when the testimony first began many weeks ago. So, I would just vote no on the overlay.
I would point out that there's always the opportunity for an applicant to come and ask for a change in the zone, for an actual project.
Proposed project.
An actual project.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. And they do that. It's been a while, but they do that. That's how we ended up with the Oak Street Square, the applicant, that was residential. They bought the property, they came for a rezone.
Oh, yeah.
Then came and put the proposal in. It does happen.
And it wouldn't have to just be spot because they own the property right across the creek.
So, am I hearing that's three noes?
I'm disappointed. I was hoping that we were going to come up with something. I was hoping that we had a...
Me, too.
A partner. And I don't, I'm not hearing that now.
I mean, we've worked really, really hard on this.
Yeah, we did.
And our staff has just been inundated with this for weeks and weeks and weeks. And they've worked and worked to try to find those solutions. And, I mean, this is not, it's not an easy thing, that's for sure. And it's, I agree with you, I'm disappointed extremely. But I've been disappointed through this whole thing because I'm like, we're making, we're looking at making changes because of, really, of one businessperson, which is okay if there's a willingness to help make things happen.
I mean, all of this said, even if the, you know, I'm not changing my view on the overlay, but I think probably we're all also still wanting to do something to allow Mill Ends to rebuild if they could rebuild with office or other zone-appropriate use if there's no overlay.
I would love for them to rebuild.
So, we would still want to keep in the piece that we crafted about...
Grandfathering.
Grandfathering them, basically.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
I thought we answered that question last time.
Yeah, I think we did. I just wanted to make clear that that was still, we weren't saying no grandfathering of anyone.
So, did you say, did the staff note say that we needed an official vote on this two-foot item?
It would be helpful for me, just to make sure that we have it closed out. We did not bring the ordinance tonight because we were expecting significant changes. So, there's still an additional discussion to be had on the overlay as the remainder of the overlay that we want to talk about, which is height.
What overlay? Do you mean the NME?
I'm sorry, not the overlay, for the actual...
The NME.
The NME.
The whole NME.
Okay. So, if you guys can close out this discussion, it would be really helpful just to make sure that there's clarity to staff that this is now done.
Well, I would move that we do not adopt a residential overlay. It's as simple as that. I don't know, what else? Do you need more or is that...
So, you just say adopt the MMU?
Well, I'm not going any further, but that I would move that we do not adopt an overlay and just leave it at that and then we move on to our further discussions if you need some closeout.
No, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to not adopt an overlay that would include residential. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? So, it's 4-1. And I want to explain that vote to my fellow councilors. We're reacting to the testimony of one person who is not the owner.
But the owner's had six weeks.
I agree.
Didn't provide any written testimony or reaction to...
I'm not making further argument, I'm just explaining my vote. Explaining my vote, that's all.
Also said was a representative of the owner.
I know.
Right.
That's the same as the owner said when they're saying that.
Yep. Okay, so, the next question is, do we want to allow? Would you pull that slide up, please, on the height question?
I thought there were other questions.
Mm-hmm. Oh, that was never...
All right, so, the new proposed is a minimum of 25 with a maximum base...
Base, maximum.
45 that can go to 90 if you do green. Is that what that means? Okay.
Yeah.
I like it.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that as well.
Me, too.
Yep. That was easy. Why aren't they all that easy?
So, we're dropping the maximum height from 65 to 45, right? And you only get to go above 45 if you do green building?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? You sure? Because we're on a roll here.
Yeah, we're...
Just like the middle call.
We're working through this.
Tell me like the middle call.
Well, there was the what green building standard and the replacing passive, replacing green globes with passive house.
So, I've been working on new language that's, and I had it, but we were supposed to have conversations, and we haven't had the conversations.
We, so, what I had discussed with you earlier tonight is that we could bring you back that language into here and then reference to this point instead of going the other direction. So, we can work on that language since we don't have the ordinance with us tonight and have that clarified in if you guys want us to do that.
Okay. All right, cool.
Holy cow. Are we actually done?
Can I ask for a motion on that?
Is there the rest about, no one else had any issues with the street, the, what are they called, key streets or whatever? I mean, I don't have a problem with this other stuff. Does anyone else, though?
No, but, and the ones like Millport, that won't become a key street if there's no overlay there, is my understanding.
That's right. So, we don't have to consider it.
No, I think Millport's still working. No, Millport was only if, I asked that last time, it was only if overlay.
Right.
So, I have a piece that I want to have a conversation with you guys about.
I know.
Because this is something we've run into on every single hearing where there's a natural area, wetlands, and they want to encroach on it. The thing is, avoid, minimize, or mitigate. And what that always boils down to is mitigation. And it's some lame concept around mitigation, "We're going to plant 12 extra trees and get rid of all the blackberry and aren't you happy with us?" But it's not like there's any tiered, like, if you avoid, good, you get all the things that you want, you know, you get to do your project just like it is.
What page?
If you either minimize or mitigate RS 39, it seems like there needs to be some kind of, you lose somehow if you have to drop down to the less good of minimizing or mitigate.
So, this sounds like a much bigger discussion, though, than what we're doing here for tonight. I don't disagree with you, but I do think it's going to be a significant code amendment.
I mean, I think truthfully, the 50-foot buffer is huge, I mean, that will be a huge improvement over what's there now.
Well, it will be a huge improvement, but you can't...
Because everybody's got concrete up to the...
It's not going to be a removal.
People will, they'll say, "Oh, we can't make the project, we can't make it pencil if we can't be 25 feet away." The old building was right up against it.
I don't think...
We just want to be 25 feet away. You know it's going to have to look, pull up that map, the one that has the 50-foot buffer. It goes through several of the buildings, like literally through...
Not the 100, the 50.
Not the 100, the 50. It goes through several of the buildings.
Right there.
There's both maps.
So, look at the green, right? It's the green on the left one.
Mm-hmm. The dark green. Yeah, I had to look that up here.
It cuts into buildings and you know dang good and well that when they get ready to redevelop, they're going to want every square inch that they had before. And then we're going to be back to this mitigation thing and we're going to end up with a 12-foot wide creek with concrete right up against it.
So, we're going to be working on the comp plan?
Yeah, I don't think the mitigate goes that far. I mean, well, no.
All right, well, you can put it in, put it in the comp plan parking lot.
I can, I can do that right now.
Denny's writing it down.
Okay, you got that?
I already figured we were working on this.
Yeah.
Good. That's the only other note I think I had on this.
Those are our only decision factors on this tonight?
I think these are the only ones that we need for tonight. We still have to bring you back the ordinance and have reviews. You may choose to make amendments to the ordinance at that time, but we'd like you to see the final draft. So, I think those are the only questions we had.
One more.
Sure.
Innovation district or industrial district?
Oh, that's right. Someone's going to make the motion.
Or employment district. I, you know, I like the idea of calling it the innovation district. As I thought about that more this week, though, I'm also not sure that other folks would understand what that means, but I'd love to have something other than industrial. And it is an employment area, but I could go with either one of those, but I, I would feel more comfortable if it didn't say industrial area, even though that's basically what.
I just heard about something and I'm not going to remember the name of it because it was like a passing conversation on the train, that there's some new innovation partnership with, is it with Portland State and OHSU, Innovation Hub something or other?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the Innovation Hub.
So, I like innovation even more.
Because of that.
Because of that.
Because those are the kinds of things that I think eventually will come here, too.
Yeah.
And that's the future of employment, right? That's the future of particularly a small area. We don't have the big campus potential that...
Right. So, do we need a motion to change the name of it?
I would, I think it'd be worthwhile. You guys have talked about it for a long time.
I'll make a motion.
There's no, I suppose there's no stomach for getting rid of North.
I was going to go there, too.
But we don't have a South Milwaukee area.
We have a South Maine.
Well, we have South Maine and we have the International Way. If we call it the Milwaukee Industrial Area, it's not our only one.
Well, I thought we were going to do the Milwaukee Innovation Area.
Well, Milwaukee.
It is.
I guess my question, then, is, does that mean that the industrial area is not an innovation area?
That the industrial area is not...
No, the International Way.
International is not innovation.
And that is part of why we have kept it as North, is to designate the area that we've been talking about.
Yeah.
I like that it stays NMIA. That was the reason why.
Right, and that's why innovation works.
Rather than being missing in action. We dropped the notion.
Yeah, I had that in mind, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Sort of like residential and fill project.
North Milwaukee Industrial Area.
No, innovation.
I stopped.
I make a motion we change the name of this area to the North Milwaukee Innovation Area.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to change the name of the North Milwaukee Industrial Area to the North Milwaukee Innovation Area. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard. There you go.
Thank you.
What else you got?
Bring it.
So, we need to continue this hearing to a date certain. So, the question to Denny is, when? When do you want this back? Mayor? Do you want the next meeting? Okay, so, that's...
We talked about it. There was a June 19th date.
Okay, so, it's June 19th.
June 19th.
I move to continue the hearing on the North Milwaukee Innovation Area Plan and Code Amendments filed CPA 2017-002, CA 2017-003, to a date certain of June 19th, 2018.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded to continue the hearing on the North Milwaukee Innovation Area Plan and Code Amendments filed CPA-2017-002 and CA-2017-003, to a date certain of June 19th. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, is continued.
So, Mayor, we are going to be going into executive session after this, so it'd be great if we could have the cameras off for the night and do, yep.
So, where did my little...
Show and tell.
No, well, no, I was looking for...
Updates.
Just close it down. Make sure you shut down and not just like this.
Okay. After we do the council announcements, we will be going into executive session pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute ORS 192.6602H to consult with council concerning legal rights and duties regarding current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. So, our city manager, Ann Ober, is holding an open-door event on Thursday, April 19th from 4:00 p.m. till 5:30 p.m. here at City Hall. If you would like to meet and talk with the city manager, please stop by. The 2018 Milwaukee Earth Day Cleanup Event, scheduled for Saturday, April 21st, 1:00 a.m. till noon at Ball-Michelle Park, is still seeking volunteers. All volunteers will be treated to pizza, to a pizza lunch at noon to celebrate their morning's accomplishments. To learn more and to register to volunteer, visit www.nawakioregon.gov/volunteering. After the Earth Day event, participate in an Arbor Day celebration from noon until 1:30 p.m. at the same location, which will include fun activities for kids, a tree giveaway, a ceremonial tree planting, a special guest, and more. Such a bummer. Okay, join us next...
Just keep going.
Join us next Tuesday, April 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Milwaukee Masonic Lodge to view the current library design, including interior and exterior views, materials, and site design, period. Translation services for Spanish speakers and childcare will be available. The Masonic Lodge is located downtown at the corner of Main Street and Harrison Street. The Carry the Load National Relay will come through Milwaukee on Friday, April 27th, using the 17th Avenue path and trolley trail. Carry the Load is a nonprofit dedicated to providing active, meaningful ways to honor and celebrate the sacrifices made by our nation's heroes, including military, law enforcement, firefighters, rescue personnel, and their families.
What was the date of that?
That's April 27th. There are three great events happening... There are three great events happening on Saturday, April 28th, including the Milwaukee Police Department Drug Turn-in and Shredding Event from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at the Public Safety Building. This is a great opportunity to dispose of unused medications while also ridding yourself of old confidential records to help prevent identity theft. The Ardenwall-Johnson Creek Neighborhood will be cleaning up the terrace along Johnson Creek Boulevard from 10:00 a.m. until noon. Volunteers are needed to help remove invasive plants along the important greenway into Milwaukee. If you are interested in volunteering, meet at Southeast 43rd and Johnson Creek Boulevard by 10:00 a.m. with your favorite tools and durable gloves. The final event of the day on April 28th, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., will be the inaugural benefit dinner for the North Clackamas Urban Watersheds Council, which is the organization that works to restore and enhance Kellogg Creek. Tickets are still available. Just visit the city's calendar of events and on the homepage at www.milwaukeeoregon.gov to find more information and a link to purchase tickets. Kendra and I will be attending that, as will you.
Yep.
That's all I have. You guys have anything else?
A couple of quick things. One is, we will have another meeting before this, but just, I'm getting excited, because May 4th is First Friday, and May 6th is the First Farmer's Market, which is the sign that winter's over, even though it doesn't feel like that lately. April has been a bummer of a bummer of a bummer of an April. But the other thing is, I'd like to announce that Wilda and I were happily part of a meeting in here with a few other women last night. That was the official signing of the, all the proper documentation to launch the Milwaukee Parks Foundation, which should be opening its bank account and having its 501(c)(3) status in the next few weeks. And we'll be reaching out for volunteers to help with designing a website and, you know... And the board, really, we sort of... The board can be up to 12 people. We are just kind of a placeholder board to get it started, but we will definitely be looking to recruit people to serve on the board, especially people who have good fundraising skills, because we want to help. You know, we saw in our work session today, there's a lot of parks that the SDCs are not going to fund. And so we're hoping to use this as a way to help leverage some private funding to help support our parks. So watch for more in the weeks ahead.
More to come.
It's great.